Sure.
Sure.
Are we waiting for it to pop up?
Yeah. And everybody's... Susan, you got in?
I'm getting married.
How do we get to the network?
Do you want to do it by hand?
You need a guest network.
Oh, the guest.
I'm here with me, so let's see if I can log in to it or...
I voted.
So you kept forgetting to hurry. Nice jumper.
I got a nice Chromebook from Scott, so opens, everything's safe.
He's voted?
Quick.
There's seven of them right there on the counter. That's what they're there for.
Maybe we should put Ellie on one of those?
Sure.
Should we try?
It wouldn't let you log into places?
It did. She's in on me. I just don't know how it's gonna work. Just waiting for Susan and then we'll go. You ready, Susan?
No, but I'll go.
Do you wanna? Yes. Okay, that's unanimous. All right. Can I get a motion to convene executive session to discuss the employment of particular people?
Sure.
Sure.
Fall in favor? Two of you still want to...
Thank you. All right. Just have the video? Yes. Can I get a motion to reconvene out of executive session?
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Everybody in? All right, let's stand for the punch.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
All right. So we go to public input one. If there's anybody here for public input one, please come up to the podium, state your name. You'll have three minutes, and please do not mention any individual's names and students. Is anyone here? Please come up.
Hi, my name is Caleb Kraschenoff, as you may know. I'm concerned with what's, to me, a rush to appoint two positions that were announced last Wednesday. The deadline was Friday, that's two days, and you're appointing them today. Now, I know they've worked here, and they might be super qualified. This is not a judgment against their qualifications whatsoever. It's about the procedures. I think, in my turn, in my view, when you announce a position, is to get a wide range of maybe very talented people from your community that you could actually draw upon. And with this sort of like Wednesday, closed on Friday, appointed today, it just doesn't feel like them. And what I really, what's... I see here now, I don't want to get specific about it, but what's really alarming to me about it is it sets a standard that people won't... You're trying to engage the community to be part of the school. And when you do something like this, what people say is, "I'm not gonna bother. It's an inside job. I'm not gonna bother, because they've already decided who's gonna do this or do that." And it doesn't really give you the chance to see who's available here. And they could be less qualified, or they could be more qualified. I'd ask questions that I don't think anybody will answer, but how many applications did you have? How many did you interview? I think with two days' notice, I can assume not many. And it makes it alarming to me. And as somebody, a taxpayer here, I want somebody who has been vetted and from a large pool of the community. So that's my concern. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here for public input one? All right. So moving on to section five, President's Comments. I don't have anything other than to introduce our new interim superintendent, Ellie Tritt. We are so happy to have you here. Welcome.
Thank you. As I indicated, I'm absolutely delighted to be here. Sag Harbor is an exceptional community and an exceptional school district. After being here just two days, the most striking feature is how well the staff works together. They're an amazing team, positive. Everyone loves their work. Everyone ships in to help other people out. Everybody's walking around smiling. The children, as we walk through the hallway, the children are energetic and involved. And there's interaction attended. The snowflake tea and great parents and parents were involved with the children. And it was just a beautiful opportunity of a successful school district, and the feeling just permeates everyone. And an additional aspect which I think people may be accustomed to is the blend of the traditions and the history and the wonderful, when you drive through the streets, you have the old streets, and each houses, and everything is individual, as opposed to where I live, where everything is brand-new and kind of vacuous. And here, you have the history, that the children have the opportunity to absorb and see where they came from and the history. At the same time, that you're at the cutting edge with the arts and technologies. So you're blending the old and the new in a beautiful way. So it's just a wonderful opportunity for the children and the community to really get the best of all possible. So I'm really happy to be here and join with you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add, I want to thank Principal Nichols for, over the past several weeks and months, really, just really helping out in the transition and stepping up and just a big asset during this transition period, I'm sure you've continued before.
Absolutely. Jeff has been amazing in his pitching and doing things and working.
Very long days and times.
Many administrators have stepped up.
Yes.
Thank you all. Okay, so moving on to the administrators' report. We're gonna start with the facilities' report, which I believe is just going to be... Paul couldn't be here, but I think we're just gonna have an update with respect to Sag Harbor Learning Center by Tim. Just that, I don't think it's a...
Yeah, it's not in the order.
It's not Ed yet, though. It's Tim first. I don't know, must the administrators prefer to do what the order of the call point is. It's whichever. Start with him? Sounds like he got it up.
The... I'll go through some of the current pictures that I took today. And then I'll go through our milestone schedule, give you an update as to where we are, schedule-wise. Fairly short, but I'll let you know where we are. The top left is a... We're the... In the classrooms, we have the big screen TVs that are going in the corner. That's some of the acoustic panels that are being installed behind those. The picture on the left is, it's hard to give you the floor designs in the classrooms, but those are what the floors look like in all the classrooms on the first floor. We're installing doors today downstairs. I believe all the doors are in downstairs. The picture in the bottom center is the, I guess, the training room. That looks the same at the other end with the screens mounted on the wall. It's the same on the other end with two screens. I guess eventually we're gonna... I won't, but I think they're gonna put a divider in there to separate that room and to use it as one big room altogether. The picture in the center is the first stages of the gym floor. The second stage in that process went down today. That progresses each day. There's a step each day that they do. They will be complete with that at the end of the week, and then it'll have a cure time of about 10 days. The picture on the right is just a look down the hallway of the business offices. All the doors are in. The casework is in. Everything's pretty much complete downstairs, with the exception of the corridor floor, which they will be starting on tomorrow morning. These are some pictures upstairs on the first floor. This is the corridor looking as you walk in the building. You can see how the door frames are in. The floor will be one of the last things that will be going in upstairs. Tomorrow, we're laying out the paint schemes on the walls for the designs on the walls to accompany the door frames. The casework on the right is indicative of all the classrooms with the sinks and drinking fountains. Those are all installed. It's another picture of the acoustic panels. And that's just a... Try to give you a little bit broader view of the classrooms. You can see the floor design and the ceilings and the sofas. And it's as close to the original drawings that you guys looked at months ago. They all are pretty close in design. Another picture of the hallway down through the front. Some of the tiles are missing to let those guys work, so we don't handle those too often and damage those tiles. So that's why you see some of the tiles out in front of the ceiling. I don't know if Ed forwarded the milestone schedules. I know that you guys were looking for them at the end of last week. I know Ed had some...
Yeah, he sent them to us earlier today.
So really, overall, we're on schedule for the 31st. There are two issues that we have that won't affect the overall schedule in terms of people in the building or a certificate of occupancy. We have an issue with the elevator right now. It was a layout issue with the elevator company. I don't anticipate that running past the 31st. They made a commitment to do everything they can to get it done by the 31st. What happened was they laid the door frames out wrong. The masons put them in where they laid them out, and they were two inches off. So we had to take those door frames out, move them over two inches. It was a challenge to get the masons back on site and to get those frames out without damaging them. All that cost is incurred by Otis. It's not anything that's gonna be reflected in the district. It's something that they've owned up to and happens. The other issue that we have right now is a couple of the pieces of casework were wrong. We opted not to reorder those. We're gonna take those back to the shop and work those. They can do them in the shop quicker than they can rebuild them. Hopefully, those will be in the course of business next week. But it will not affect any of the rooms or having those finished by the 31st. We will... We will be working every day that's available. Like I said, we are on schedule for the 31st. I will be out on vacation next week, but somebody from my company will be here covering. So, and I'll be available, so if there's any issues. The good part is we're over the hump. Most of the major construction work is done. Right now, we're doing finishes and paint cleanup, getting stuff ready for punch list. So again, we'll be done by the 31st. I'll be back from vacation. We will generate a punch list, and hopefully we can get Kai's in there beginning of the year.
Has the punch list been started?
No, that's something that we... I haven't got... This week, I'll get a... They have to send me a letter for substantial completion, and then that'll generate a punch list for that particular trade. I anticipate all those to be done by the time I get back from vacation. So Ed and I will go through and generate a punch list the first week of January. And that'll be minimal. Right now, I try to keep everything that we can that's gonna be a major item on a punch list or something that's gonna be addressed, to try to get it taken care of now. Hopefully, it'll be cosmetic stuff and minor issues that we need to deal with on a punch list. It'll be fairly short.
What's your expectation on the timing of completing that?
For the punch list?
I mean, you know, there's some things I know you probably aren't aware of yet. General speaking, is it a month? Is it two months?
No. I... Once we... I mean, our completion date for the 31st stands. I would anticipate within the next 30 days, everything should be complete.
Okay.
By the end of January, the punch list should be complete. There's outstanding issues on the project that still need to be addressed, retaining wall, you know, other things that you guys are aware of, but nothing that will inhibit it moving in the building or a certificate or open the classroom. Anything else?
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak about Sag Harbor Learning Center in terms of the administration?
What do you mean by administration? We have Ed coming and speaking next, and then Jeff is gonna speak.
Okay, so I'll go to Jeff.
Good.
Yep. Thank you, Tim.
Yeah.
All right, so I think... Is Ed just gonna call in, or we're calling him?
Just time. So can we give him five minutes' notice? I'll try. I've got 30 seconds' notice.
Ed Bernhauer speaking.
Hey, Ed, it's Scott Fisher. Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you're good. You're with the group.
Okay, great. Hello, everyone. Thank you for the time this evening.
Hi, Ed. He needs an advocate. I know.
And can you...
He's literally on the phone.
Can you still hear us?
Yes, yeah, we can hear you.
You can go right ahead.
Okay, so the document that I have up, I believe, is a fun summary that was sent from our office. Do you guys have that in front of you?
No.
Nope.
Who was that sent to?
You don't.
Uh...
That was... Let's see, I'm just double-checking.
I think we're using Scott's computer, right? So if he was to email it to you, he could get it up pretty quickly?
Yeah.
Yep, so if you could email it to Scott.
Yes, you've got.
Ed, did you send it to Scott?
Yep, it just went out of my outbox, so you guys should have it just momentarily.
Awesome.
And this was a document. I'm just gonna check for everyone, so we... No, this was a document. So I'll double-check the send date.
What's the bring report?
I think he said it's a spreadsheet.
It wasn't something that was sent to us, right? If it has, if it's not big, but we can see it, we may have printed out and get copies. My eyes have been... I'm getting older every day.
It's a big board, but uh...
Yeah, but it's... It depends on how we think about it.
Okay, Ed, it's on the screen, but it is a little hard to see. Yeah, I'll try to print it out.
Are you...
Go ahead.
It's pretty high-resolution PDF, Scott. You should be able to zoom in on it.
Well, then we won't see the whole thing. It's fitting in the screen. I'm gonna try to print out some copies, so you can go ahead and talk.
Okay. So what I'll just explain is, this is a document that we provided in the past that you may recall, you've seen before. This is where we track the prime contractors on the bonded side of the project. And this is the latest version that we sent over to the district. And I was just double-checking that date. I believe it was to Lori Baum, Jeff Nichols, Paul Lilkin, and Katie Graves. And I believe that was on December 6th, yes. So it shows that, you know, all tracks all of the costs for those prime contractors. And it shows kind of the base cost, the change orders, any field directive allowances that were utilized. And then we also track, as you can see and read, upcoming costs that we're currently reviewing that the contractors have submitted.
All right, it may be helpful if you went through and explained it a little bit.
Sure. So as you're looking at your screen, one of the things that you'll see on the left-hand side, right at the top, you'll see general construction, renew contracting. So this is one of our prime contracts. And what we list is, as we move over to the right-hand side in those headings, you'll see our SED number there for the project, and then you'll see two columns. One is instruction side and incidental side. Now, the incidentals, when we're talking about the prime contractors, is really site work. So really, that's how SED breaks down their contracts into prime construction and site work construction. And you'll see that the first number that you see in black there is under construction, under the GC, which is $2,176,497, was their base bid of prime contract bid when we awarded the project for the building side of their contract. Then you'll also see the $262,000. That was for the site work portion of their contract, for a total of $2,438,497. So as you can see there, that's their base contract. Then, as we move down, you'll see any change orders that we've executed with them. So the first one is, the first two here actually revolve around onsite. We did have hazardous materials containing soil that needed to be mitigated and removed. And so those two change orders there that have been executed on the site work side, as you can see from the incidental side, were to remove that contaminated soil. Then you'll see several other red change orders that we're currently reviewing with the district. One is for... A lot of these are for kind of infrastructure items, related items, and changes based on some of the existing infrastructure after we've opened up the wall. And these ones here, as you can see in red, as I said, are not executed yet, because we're currently reviewing the costs with the contractors. Each one of them has particular items that the contractor needs to re-submit or reevaluate as far as their cost based on our review. And so you can see, as we move over to the right-hand side of the page there, it totals everything up for us. And then also, what you'll see over to the side is the invoice to date is how much the contractor has actually requisitioned for through their pay application process. And then to the right of that, you'll see allowances remaining. That's the amount of their field directive allowance, which is included in their base bid number. So that's money to be utilized that could be used against some of these red change orders that we're taking a look at or other things that might pop up in finishing off the work they have in the building. And as we move down, you'll see for the mechanical construction contract, which is the second one, that's our DNS Mechanical Services. Currently, there's a red change order there, and you'll see a zero amount. That's because the contractor, we indicated, hasn't finalized the amount yet. Now, this particular one, we just did receive a cost estimate from the contractor for adding these three additional heating units that were requested, and that would be $27,000. We're currently reviewing that cost to make sure it's accurate, and make sure that the labor rates are all in line with the New York State required labor rate. And so once that number is finalized, we'll present that to the district to see if they want to proceed with that particular one. Then, as we move down, electrical construction, you'll see we do have... Whenever you see a number, like you see under the electrical construction contract, that's in parentheses, that's a credit that's coming back towards the district. This was something where it was included for actually hooking up kitchen equipment that the district has not decided to purchase yet. So that money that was included in their bid to do that is being credited back towards the district, and that's denoted with that parentheses that you see there. There is also a change order executed for exterior lighting, repair and replacement. It was thought to originally use the existing exterior light wall packs that were there. But once we got into the actual renovations, it was found that some of the wiring was actually coming back with faults, and some of the wiring was not working. So the district instructed us to proceed with replacing that exterior lighting. And then also similar, there's a circuit in the boiler room that we're currently evaluating a cost to replace just because of the existing condition. And then as we go down, the last contract for the bid contracts was the plumbing... And then as we go down, uh, the last contract, uh, for the bid contracts was the plumbing contract. Uh, currently, there was just one, uh, change order where we were going to reuse, um, or we were going to actually, um, do a toilet room that's on the lower level, uh, through other sources, but the district came back and said they would rather have it on the prime contract, so we added it to the plumbing contract. And then also here, the credit back for, uh, not hooking up the kitchen equipment, um, that comes back towards the district. And then the last contract that we do list on here, because it is, um, part of the bonded side, however, it wasn't publicly bid, it was a cooperative purchase, uh, the, the district engaged in, was for the main roof over the learning center, um, and you see that here with Garland's Company. And there were no, no change orders, uh, as part of that contract. So any questions, uh, on the formatting of the fun summary?
I have questions on the contact. Yeah, go, okay. Uh, Ed, hi, it's Chris, thanks for calling in tonight. I just have a couple of questions, thank you for this, this is a hot call. The, um, heating units, was that an unexpected and the, the, a problem was discovered, or was that a change in scope?
Yeah, that was, that was actually, that was, um, two heating units that we were planning, that were basically just for comfort heat, that's over by the elevator and by the, uh, stage hall entrance, that's internal to the building. And we were planning on reusing two, uh, wall fins that were there. Um, after, uh, uh, the renovations to the systems and, and tying in, those two wall fins were found to not be functional, so we had to actually eliminate them. Now, per building code wise, um, our ventilation air in our main heat is actually coming from other sources, like main mechanical unit. These, uh, three units were actually just for additional comfort heat in those spaces, because there's so much exterior wall there, and because the elevator shaft does tend to transmit some thermal cold.
Okay, thank you, and then the, the furnace, because that can be costly, was that not detected in the inspection or initial scope of work, that it was old and might need to be replaced?
I'm sorry, Chris, could you say that, I, I lost the first part of what you said, which one?
Uh, the, the furnace? Furn- uh...
Uh, where do you see, where do you see the furnace?
I, I couldn't read the screen, I'm sorry. So furnace and install new circuit boiler room, okay. Is that a cost?
Yeah, that's, that's just an ele- that's just an electrical cost, and in fact, that's a minor cost. We're estimating that's probably two to three thousand dollars that will fit into the FDA.
I just heard you, I thought you said furnace, which is why I got concerned, because that is an expense.
Oh, no, sorry.
No, no, no.
No, that, that's just a particular electrical circuit.
Right. And just, and is the whole Garland Company expense an additional add-on, wasn't some of that expected? Right?
No, 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 the whole, that, that whole Garland piece is their base contract, there are no additional costs there. That was your, the original amount for the roof. So they didn't have any change orders, which was good.
Fantastic, thank you.
And just for, for context, this, um, this is all the stuff that was under, under the bond, right? But then there's additional costs, like, like this doesn't include the auditorium, right?
Yes, that's correct. So this is the bonded side of the project that the voters, uh, had passed the referendum on. There's also the work being done at stage hall, which is directly being paid for out of the general fund, uh, piece for the district. Now, those numbers are not represented here, these numbers that are represented are just the bonded referendum side.
Is it possible that the other side of the project, that the, the add-on, could be in a chart like this? Because we're still voting on costs, and then those costs may change, and there could still be change orders on that piece as well? So if we could have that side of it too, then it will give us a much more complete picture, I think.
Sure, um, I, I may need a little assistance from like Lori Baum or, um, uh, Jennifer, um, Buscemi on that. Um, the other side, the district is actually doing a direct procurement. So through your, um, you know, your business office, they're directly working with contractors to get that work done, so the reporting doesn't come through our office. Um, but I can coordinate with them and kind of format it in the similar format, uh, with the information that they give me, so we can see how we're doing on that side as well.
That would be great.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, because I, I, you know, I think that as we wrap up the project, and it's coming into clearer view, we should really be able to provide to the public a very clear picture of expenses, not just on the bond side, but on the additional costs, and I don't think we're there yet, but we should be there fast.
Yeah, I think this is, this is super, super helpful and encouraging to see how few change orders there are in relation to the bonded part. Um, but I think it would be, yeah, we should definitely know kind of what we're, what we're missing. It sounds like it's, you know, sage hall's gonna be a big part of it, um, the asbestos removal, um...
Right, without knowing that, we, it's hard to do a happy dance.
Yeah, exactly. But it's good to see that the, the bonded part of it is, um, getting finalized.
Yeah, yup, and we're getting very close to actually having all of the final costs and reports in from the contractors, so...
Great. Any other questions? Thanks, Ed.
Yeah, thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Can we get a, can we speak email to the rest who posted on the site?
Yeah. Yeah, and actually Jeff just reminded me that he had coordinated it to me, and I, I, in the craziness of the last week, we're up to sort it along, so I apologize.
We're not gonna do this yet, right? We're gonna talk a little bit more about the learning center?
Yeah, yup, here.
Okay, so, um, in the transition over the last couple of weeks, uh, Mr. Malone and I had a chance to talk to Mr. Bernhauer, who was just here, uh, skyping in, I guess, or on a call. And, um, we were specifically asking questions about when, um, we could actually occupy the facility. And you heard this evening that, um, they were pretty confident that by the thirty-first, for the most part, the actual building would be complete. There would be some punch list items that needed to be completed after that. What was not talked about was some significant construction, um, that needs to be completed with regard to the wall, uh, located in, at the exterior of the property. Uh, and that wall runs along the length of the property. Um, so Mr. Malone and I had a discussion with Mr. Bernhauer, really focusing on two things. Number one was first and foremost, safety concerns. What type of work would, um, be, um, would, would happen in the near of the building? What kinds of machines would need access to that area? And would our students be safe in the building during that period? And, uh, I concluded along with Mr. Malone that given the nature of the work that was gonna transpire back there, that it would not be wise to move students in there until that work was completed, that is, the wall. So the next question we asked Mr. Bernhauer was, what is a reasonable timeframe for the completion of that wall? And his answer was that, um, from the formulation of the RFP to awarding the bid to allowing, um, the company that has awarded the bid several weeks to organize to the actual construction phase being completed, that runs about four months, best case scenario. So if you do the math, we're looking at, you know, mid-April at the earliest, that that building would be, in my eyes at least, uh, appropriate for students to move in, uh, and possibly later than that. So I wanted to make the board aware of that, and the community aware of that, to just, uh, set the timeline in a real way, um, for what lies ahead.
So does that mean the expectation then would be, we're really looking at, for the children at least, next school year?
Well, that would be, um, that would be something to discuss further, but possibly. I mean, thankfully, we're in a position where the pre-K is housed in this building, and the programs, um, I guess the sense of urgency is not there, to move them in, uh, the end of April or May. Um, and we could push it off until September, um, but that's a decision you guys need to make at a future point. But in terms of the timeline, best case scenario, we're looking mid, mid-April. Uh, and the way construction goes, perhaps later.
So is the thinking that, that even though we'd have CBO, and even though theoretically we could put kids there, we're gonna basically choose not to let them over, so caution?
Correct.
And the thought too, I think, is we're not gonna be putting anybody in there, really. We're not moving the business officer, at least not in January, I would think, correct?
No.
Because originally, we talked about moving them over, and we had talked at some point about having daycare, although I think we've said in previous meetings, although I don't know if it's been definitive, that that will not be starting in January, it's important for parents to be aware of that.
Right. I mean, the nature, the description of the type of construction that needed to hap- that needs to happen in order for that wall to be built to the specs that we received from the architect, um, it's pretty invasive. And you have some pretty big machines back there, and I wouldn't want, uh, pre-K students or any daycare, or even our employees there until that's completed.
Thanks, I, I mean, I think everybody's obviously frustrated how long this has taken, how expensive it's been, but I appreciate Mr. Nichols looking into that and bringing that to everyone's attention as soon as possible, if it's the right thing to do.
Any other questions?
Um, just to clarify, so there's the punch list that Tim was talking about, but then, and then there's the wall, obviously, but beyond the punch list, then there's also other work that we were gonna be handling internally, right? That would then happen after the punch list is completed. So even after the punch list is done, there's still other internal work we have to do.
Yes.
What work is that?
And the scope of that work, really, Paul could, Mr. Wilkin could speak to, but the, for all intents and purposes, if the wall was not what it was, we would be moving into that facility, um, in January.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We're gonna move on to Pearson High School, um, past events, so I'll go through this really quick. Gingerbread night, the, Mr. Guine, you wanna talk a little bit about the Yop student-written plays at the Avram Theater?
Yeah, that's a partnership with the program at Stony Brook. Uh, they're masters of fine arts in writing and playwriting, um, and students work with, uh, Mr. Sheldon's class here, and they get an opportunity to try out playwriting, working with professional playwrights. And then, uh, committee chooses a student's play, uh, in this case this year, two student plays, to be performed at the Avram Theater in Southampton. And, uh, student actors, with the help of professional directors, put that on.
And, uh, we've had some musical performances, uh, we've had the high school fall play, uh, which was wonderful. Do you wanna speak real briefly, twice in one night, Mr. Guine, about the I B Disciplinary Science Project?
Sure, so, uh, this is the Group Four project, it's where all the students who take physics, chemistry, uh, biology, and environmental science get together. Uh, they're put in groups, um, interdisciplinary groups, and the students choose a topic to explore through the lens of each discipline. Um, so for example, they could choose, uh, sharks and look at, uh, the, the sharks swimming through physics trajectories, uh, their habitat through biology, uh, and their chemical makeup, for example.
Great.
It's a great project, gets the classes together, working together.
And then lastly, we, we participated in Literature Live at Bay Street, um, so we sent, uh, most of our high school students, Mr. Guine?
All of them.
All of them. And let's see if there's some pictures here. Upcoming, uh, events, the early release drill, which we're required to do, um, is the twentieth, which is the last day before break. So we get out at, uh, I think at the end of eighth period, everybody goes home. Um, Mr. Malone, what time do you get out?
Um, two sixteen.
Two sixteen, I think we're one thirty-one. Uh, winter break, the twenty-third and the third, next conversations with administrators is the seventeenth. Regents exams, which is somewhat misleading, we don't have a lot of regents exams in January, that's mostly makeups. The prime, uh, assessment period is in June. End of the marking period's the end of, which is really the semester one, is the end of January, and that's when the senior class is ranked, um, one last time for valedictorian and salutatorian purposes. Uh, and spirit night, the twenty-fourth, uh, as well. Miss Carrie Arrow, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because Mr. Nichols touched on this, because we were shared, shared buildings. So the eighth grade, um, the entire eighth group went to Anne Frank on the twenty-second, as well as the seventh grade, this is our second year doing it, um, the, it takes two documentary film festival that happens at Bay Street, they invited us over, um, and we went on the fifth. We also had one high school group that also attended as well. Um, the chorus concert, and as Ms. Tripp mentioned, last Friday was the annual conflict day. So here are some pictures from conflict day. And it's also good for the kids, right before the holidays, be very nice to their grandparents. And this is the seventh grade, it's interactive, yes, they watch a documentary and then, but they also learn of how they are made as well. And then this was spearheaded by Mr. Gramoff and the advisors, Mr. Terry, Ms. Caulfield, and Mr. Rainey, and it was an after-school spirit night for our middle school, kind of to get them excited for the high school one. Um, so there was a Gaga tournament where we raised, I think, two hundred dollars for the middle school trips. Um, and then the girls volleyball teams played each other, as well as our boys' basketball teams played each other. It was very well attended. And now we're up on the winter concert, of course, they like to close right before they go on stage. So our last winter concert for the middle school is the band concert, which is tomorrow at seven PM. Um, early release drill, Mr. Nichols is correct, we get out at the end of eighth period for the middle high school, so it will be one thirty-one. Um, Mr. Terry is taking the kids on a ski trip to, if they would like to, um, to Wyndham. If a student cannot afford it, we will figure out a way for them to go. Um, and those are Saturdays, all-day affairs, the kids are zomped by the time they get back, but it's really exciting for them. And we give lessons to kids, we don't just send them up in the gompa, don't worry. Um, the sixth grade will be going to West Hampton Beach to celebrate Chinese New Year and learn about it. Conversation with administrators on the seventeenth, and again, the marking period ends on the twenty-fourth. Mr. Malone? I'm gonna hand you the torch.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Wonderful time of year at the elementary school. I think, um, Mr. Raino, so is this one of the doors?
Yes, it is.
So, um, throughout the building, there's just great things happening, um, a lot of the classes have gotten involved in a little door decorating contest, so here's a beautiful quote, just kind of, uh, exemplifies what's going on around the building. Some of the, some of the past events to highlight, uh, big thanks to our PTA, um, as you know, they really, uh, throw their heart and souls into a lot of great activities for the, um, elementary children and their families. Two examples were the, the book fair, which, um, was right around the Thanksgiving, right before Thanksgiving, really successful. To kick off the holiday season, they support the gingerbread night, um, on the sixth. And then we rolled into the performing arts season, so we had a great concert the other night, all the different performing groups shared their talents. And just today, our, um, dance club kicked the morning off with a, a great, um, holiday-themed show. And then this afternoon, our third grade shared their performing arts event. Here's some more of the, the great doors, the kids are really enjoying, enjoying decorating the doors along with their teachers. Guess we're gonna have to give out some prizes, huh?
Yes, tomorrow.
Yeah. This is a, this picture is, this is a great, um, shot of today's performing arts show. And not only are the students up on stage speaking and singing, they're also, um, behind the scenes for probably the last few months, uh, putting together all the stagecraft, the, um, the backdrops, their, their costuming, working on the choreography. It's, um, really a big undertaking, but a, you know, a wonderful process that the kids are involved in, and they, they learn a lot of great skills as a part of the performing arts program. This was a story about Hanukkah that was read this morning by Ms. Cohen. Some great shots of the concert. And then upcoming, for the remainder of the week, the different shows continue. Our fourth grade do an annual winter museum. And it's been a place in school for about twenty years. So, each of the students do some research around a winter activity or specifically a holiday tradition in their household. And then the classrooms become a museum, and the families come in and enjoy seeing all their work. And then we'll close things out on the twentieth with our release drill. We do release at two sixteen, as I said. And then when we get back from the recess, we actually start up the swimming program. And for those that aren't aware, we send our first and through fifth graders to the Y. They take an initial lesson, kind of assess where they're at as swimmers. And then they're involved in instruction, which is led by Ms. Reynoso and our P.E. teacher. So, it's a big undertaking, but I think this might be like our fifteenth.
That's right.
Is that right?
Fifteen years.
Fifteenth year of this program. It's just a great way to expose kids to that wonderful facility, but also hopefully make sure that they're safe in ending around the water, which is such a big part of life here on the East End. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Good evening, everybody. The athletics update. Our past events show some highlights from the fall. We really have, we're gonna finish up the fall season. We just had all our postseason coaches awards were given out. We had several athletes get pretty prestigious awards in terms of all-state, all-county. And they're going to be awarded on one of our upcoming events. It's gonna be the Fall Varsity Athletic Awards Night. We're gonna have it in the auditorium at seven o'clock on the nineteenth. And we're going to honor the varsity fall teams. And we're going to, this is a little bit different than the formats we've used previously. So, we're planning on having a varsity athletic awards night for each of the seasons. And then at the end of the season, we're planning something a little bit different for the seniors, for the senior athletes, to give them a send-off. So, we're, that'll be the first time we've utilized this format, where we're gonna actually have three separate award ceremonies. Late winter sports begin, you know, Mr. Malone always says the calendar just keeps turning. Late winter sports begins, which marks the halfway point of our athletic calendar, on January twenty-first. Spirit night, for those of you who've never attended, it's a, it's an amazing, it's an amazing night. It really encapsulates not only our varsity and teams, as well as the, the youth basketball program, which is very healthy here in our community. Spring sports begin on the ninth, on three-nine. And our final sports season starts on three-twenty-three. Do we have any, we have some, several photos. The one on the left there, I believe, is from the Field Hockey Coaches Association Dinner. We were very well-represented at all our Coaches Association dinners. I feel like I say it every year, we had a very successful fall. Our students and coaches should be commended for their efforts. We had a representative, this is our girls' cross-country team. They won the Class D county title. They represented us up in Plattsburgh. I believe it was like thirty-two degrees out, a little snow. And Mr. Fisher would be up next, is there any questions?
What time is Thursday? Did you say seven?
Thursday's at seven. We're gonna have a light reception at six-thirty in the, in the lobby outside of the auditorium. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Can I give you a quick update? I think much of this information I've gone over previously, but I just want to revisit it quickly to let you know where we're at. We're in pretty good shape with regards to making our way back to a hundred percent. We're still not there yet, but we have accomplished quite a bit. I mentioned previously that we've added some software, both in the backend and the frontend, to help us minimize any chance of any type of future problems. All of the user devices, whether they're students or staff, for the most part at this point, have been wiped clean, reformatted. And we put the new software on there for the protection. The slowest part of that process, unfortunately, is we took off the user files before we wiped the machines clean and getting those back, because there's just a tremendous amount of information that people have collected over the years. So, it's taking us a tremendous amount of time to get that off of the external drive and back to them. But we are making steady progress with that. This past week, the computer labs were set up. They're not a hundred percent functional yet, but they should be by the end of this week, which of course means actually the start of the year upon returning from the break. But this lab here and the lab next door was done. The elementary school lab work was done on that as well. And now we're moving on to the Pearson Art Rooms, which have their own sets of devices. So, Mr. Solo's room, for the most part, is done. He still needs some software added. But the machines downstairs for the middle school art room were in the process of being done yesterday and today. And then the last set of art room devices would be in Mr. Bartolado's room. So, we're working on that. At this point, we recreated all of the servers. So, the visitor check-in system up front is working. The employee badge system is fully functional, the time clocks. The camera and security system, for the most part, is working. I say for the most part because some of the older cameras that were, that were not a part of the newer solution we put in, we're having some problems with them, but we're working to get those cameras working or fixed as well. And the, the last hurdle, really, the big one for us, is the print server. That is something that we continue to work on. We have printers in every class, and we wanna make sure that the devices, both the student and the staff, that they can print it. For the time being, I believe we have at least set up where there's common printers throughout each of the buildings that people can print to, so they're no longer as stuck with printing issues as they were previously. And perhaps maybe this will force people to cut down a little bit on their content and share information digitally as a result. We also updated our firewall. We've secured some things in there. Our wireless controls have been reconfigured. We've actually established new wireless networks. You might see some new names. That's, that's what's going on with that. We actually have some that, that you might not even be aware of. But the whole purpose of that is to segment the devices, to make sure that we have our devices the school owns have access to certain things and devices that other people bring into the district be limited even further than they, they were previously. And we've also established a whole new backup system. So, we're making some, some real progress with regards to that. Tim is, he's gone already? Tim might have, you know, he's gone over some of this already. But the audiovisual equipment, that's the large group instruction space, that picture at the top. That was a simulant to the picture Tim showed. It'll be duplicated on the opposite side of the room as well. The installation of the cameras and security devices, when I wrote this today, it was to begin soon, it started. The guy's actually there now, waiting for me to beep. So, that work is underway. We hope to keep moving forward with as much of that as we can. That bottom corner picture is very hard to see, but that's actually the fire alarm system in the far corner. And then the center of that picture is our data rack. So, the equipment has been racked, it's just not physically connected and giving us network traffic across the, across. At the security door locks and the camera installation, I doubled that up. I said, I did fix it, sorry. It actually began today. So, that, that work is underway right now, as we speak. And we're gonna keep moving forward with that. Anybody have any questions about any of that?
One question I had on the first slide. So, you said user files are in process of being scanned and returned. Where in the process are we on that?
I have every user's files on an external drive. I started loading them up into Google Drive and just sharing them back to them. So, at this point, I'm gonna guess I'm maybe a third or more through that. It's, it's really time-consuming. When, when I look at the upload time that it says, it says a hundred and seventy-six thousand hours. That's how long it's going to take to upload. And that's just a few of the people. And the reason for that is with pictures and all sorts of things, that we're really doing our best to try to retain for everybody. So, it is taking us a long time, but.
I think it was just an important thing for everyone to be aware of. Because I know there was, we've gotten some questions from community members saying, you know, why haven't the minutes from this meeting been posted? And in some cases, it might be a teacher that was taking the minutes, and the minutes were on their laptop before the cyber attack. They haven't gotten them back yet. Similarly, teachers would have other types of documents that they're still waiting on, so.
Yeah. So, it can be a challenge for them, and everybody's been extremely patient and understanding. I think they're just happy that we're telling them there's hope, that, you know, their, their work isn't completely lost, so they're, they're being patient. And of course, if somebody has an absolute immediate need, as one teacher in particular that I can think of, that, that a really super, I, I need this like today. We, we got the files that day, and everybody else has been very patient, so.
Thanks so much, Scott.
I could look at a question. Thank you, this is very helpful. Thank you for working during it. It's just a lot of heavy lifting right now. Currently, what's the impact to the children in terms of the classroom experience?
I would have to have the building administrator speak to that. The, I'm sure the teachers are not, you know, excited about the way things have been. I think that they've been steadily improving. We've been trying to be supportive to them and provide them what they need, but that would be more of a question for the administrators, whether that's, you know, significantly impacting the instruction. I'm sure when the computers are completely offline.
Yeah.
But they're just instruction in a different way?
Right. Exactly. Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to the elementary school. For those first few days, there obviously had to take place a shift, because everybody had been in the flow of taking out the computers, using them as needed. But once, once people kind of realized that we were down for a bit, the adjustment was made pretty quickly. Scott and his team got the Chromebooks, which at the elementary school, the fourth and fifth graders, especially this time of year, when they're completing different projects, they, they rely on those. But they got those back in the hands of the kids pretty quickly. So, I'd say, you know, for the most part, right now, we're in, we're in a pretty good place. Printing remains a bit of an issue, but we're getting back, back to speed there. And Scott, is it the smart, the smart notebook?
That's, that's gone out now at this point. So, the teachers that have requested that, we did notice an issue that if the teachers weren't acknowledging, because the software was pushed out to them, they had to accept a security setting. And if they didn't realize that, it didn't have its full functionality. But now that we've figured that out, we've revisited, and they have the full functionality of the writing tools for the teachers that use it. Not all of our teachers use that software, but those that do really, really like it, so.
Yeah, so at this point in time, we're, I'd say we're in a pretty good place as far as classroom instruction and technology support.
I would say similar for the high school. Immediately following, there was some, immediately following the, the cyber attack, there was some panic amongst teachers in terms of having their lesson plans stored and those kinds of things. But people adapt and, and move forward. And we've been in the classrooms conducting observations pretty regularly, my Brittany and myself. And from your perspective, things look like they're going through well, right?
I think the biggest thing is the printing's a pain for the teachers. So, that's the biggest front line. But I also think it was nice, some of the teachers were self-reflected, that it's nice not to always have to rely on the computer all the time and bring it back.
Let me, I just wanna explain why the printing is taking so long. Each device has to be physically visited. We have to attach a network device to it and, and get some information back. And then we have to make some physical changes, both at the printer side and in the server closet, in order for it to be on the new network. So, that's why it's, it's a physically going from, from device to device. So, that's why it's taking longer than we'd hoped.
We're saving some trees in the process.
I'm sorry?
We're saving some trees in the process.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Great, so we can move on to the consent agenda. And if everyone wants to make sure they're logged in. Can I get a motion to approve items eight point one through eight point twenty-two? So, move.
Second.
Pam.
Okay.
No, you're good.
Oh.
It's unanimous.
Can I get a motion to approve item nine point one, the affiliation agreement with SUNY Stony Brook?
Second.
Any discussion?
Could you just be a, you know, a one, two-minute explanation of what this is? Because it's a little different than some what we've done in the past, it'd be helpful.
Sure, I can do that for you. So, this is an affiliation agreement with SUNY Stony Brook to allow occupational therapy interns to intern in the Sag Harbor School District. It also opens up opportunities for other folks in that department, such as physical therapy, to also intern. It does two main things. One is it gives us an opportunity to help our related service personnel in those areas to work at the top of their professional licensure by interacting with professors and interns and being exposed to new, new research in the field. It also gives an opportunity for folks to come and learn about the Sag Harbor School District and the South Fork, and hopefully track some related service providers to this area. As you know, we've had some trouble getting a physical therapist. We had our current contracted physical therapist out. So, this is an opportunity to build capacity to support students with special needs on the East End.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve item nine point two? The approval of the United Public Services Employees Union Sag Harbor Bus Drivers Union Memorandum of Agreement for Donation of Sick Days. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, let's. Can I get a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for donation of sick days with respect to the Sag Harbor teaching assistants?
So moved.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the appointment of nine point four? Appointment of Lori Baum as school business administrator?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Welcome aboard, and thank you.
That is six, four, and one opposed.
Can I get a motion to accept, so nine point five, except Lori Baum's letter of resignation with respect to her old position of assistant to the school business administrator?
Second.
Any discussion?
Unanimous, thank you.
Can I get a motion for nine point six, to appoint Rashida Wallace as assistant to the school business administrator?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'm gonna be voting no, and I just wanna go on record, it is not in reflection to this particular candidate. But I feel like the process was not done properly. Typically, if you're gonna be posting for a job like this, in this district or others, it would be posted for at least one to two weeks. Have time for evaluation of resumes, a proper interview process, and then a selection and appointment. This was posted last Wednesday, only posted from Wednesday to Friday. And Thursday night, the agenda was posted with the candidate already selected. So, I don't feel like the process afforded to have the proper search to see if there were anyone in the community or surrounding districts or anywhere else that might be an interesting candidate. And again, not a reflection on her, but not only was this not a perfect process, I think it was a very broken process, and unfair to those that might have been qualified and could have participated properly if it had been done, from my perspective, the right way.
Jeff, do you care to talk to what the process was?
Sure. So, so Ms. Graves, the position for the business administrator was originally posted several months ago. And she convened or asked Mr. Malone, myself, Ms. Carriero, and Ms. Lawrence to sit on the interview committee, which we did. And we interviewed the candidates that she presented to us. And we found two candidates out of the applicant pool to be impressive. So, she offered one of the candidates the business administrator position, and that was Lori Baum, who you approved several minutes ago. And there was another candidate who the committee was impressed with. And she decided to appoint that candidate to the assistant to the school business administrator position. uh, even though she had applied for the, uh, business administrator position. Um, so that was her thinking and I, um, it's sort of analogous, although it's not an exact analogy, that in the past, um, I've advertised for probationary track teaching positions. For instance, let's say I had a seven through twelve English position. I've gone through the interview process with the committee, selected a candidate, uh, that was to our liking, uh, to the teaching position. But we had another candidate who we were also impressed with, who we appointed or recommended would be appointed to a teacher assistant position that, um, we didn't post for. So I think that was Ms., uh, Ms. Graves' thinking in this situation. She found two good candidates and she thought she could fill the two positions, um, with those two candidates.
Thank you for that clarification.
Well.
Any further discussion?
Okay, that is five yes and two opposed. Chris Tyson, you're opposed, um, opposed. Motion carried.
Um, can I get a motion to approve nine point seven, the corrective action plan?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So I just want to thank the members of the art committee. I think we've had a very qualified, uh, art committee this year under Susan's, uh, chairmanship, chair of christenship. And, uh, so I think the process has been very productive.
And thank you to Lori for putting the corrective action plan together.
Yes.
She's been going above and beyond. And now she actually has the title of business administrator, even though she's been doing a lot of those speeches around, so thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Can I get a motion to approve, um, item ten point ten, adopting policy seven five one eight with respect to concussion management?
Sure, move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay.
Unanimous. Moving on to committee reports, uh, we had a request for the transportation committee to make a presentation.
Um, I just wanted to update the board a little bit. Um, the transportation committee met last week.
For last?
Um, if you recall, the last time the transportation committee came and presented, um, we gave you the options for adding another bus and that sort of thing based on the, um, report from the consultant. And, and then the next part of that puzzle was like, what do you want to do with the transportation committee next? The transportation committee was interested in exploring safe routes to school. Um, I got the green light from the board at that time. So, um, as a committee, we started looking at, um, the Safe Roots to School grant. Um, apparently that grant is no longer funded through the federal government, but there is another grant that is similar and kind of, um, can umbrella safe routes to school type, um, funding projects. And it's a transportation alternative programs. Um, and it's funded through the federal government, um, and the New York State Department of Transportation. So as I was, um, reading up on that grant and what it can do, I saw that, um, basically the way it works is that the grant will pay for eighty percent of funding of projects that, um, support biking, walking, those sorts of things. And I saw on the list of the last go-around with the grant that Southampton Town was a recipient of the grant on the last round. Um, so I called Tommy John Skavoni and I said, hey, do you know anything about this? And he said, yes, as a matter of fact, we got some bike paths and multi-use paths to connect the village and the beaches and these sorts of things. So, um, there was a safe routes to school initiative, kind of locally by residents, um, to try and get that ball rolling several years ago now. And at that time, the, um, village wasn't, um, prepared to move forward on that project because, um, the deal with the grant is that you have to pay upfront for all that project and you get reimbursed for eighty percent of it. So you'd have to bond out for the project. Um, and I think they weren't sure how to do that or what that might look like or those sorts of things. With, um, new mayor in the village and some new trustees, I made a phone call to Aiden Corish, who's now a village trustee, and I had lunch with him and Tommy John and said, you know, if, how does this work with respect to, like, if we want to start getting sidewalks that connect our school with the surrounding neighborhoods so that we can increase, um, the safety of students walking, this sort of thing? Like, what might that look like? And, and basically the outcome of that conversation was that if, if we as a school community wanted to explore, um, what that might look like and then we presented it to the town and the village and possibly East Hampton and said, hey, you know, this is what the school would love to see. Um, here's the grant, here's how it could be funded, you know, this sort of thing, then, um, the municipalities can take the ball and run with it. Um, we as a school district cannot apply for that grant. It has to be the municipalities. And the reason I think that it's been so challenging to do anything like that up until now is because our Sag Harbor community is in three municipalities. We've got the village and we've got students in Southampton and East Hampton. Um, but as everybody in the school community knows, it's, it's challenging to have a safe walking path, even for people that live a couple of blocks or a couple of houses away from the school because we don't have sidewalks and that sort of thing. So, um, when we had talked to the mayor about the sidewalks, she was definitely open to enforcing, um, the clearing of the sidewalks, which she did on this last storm. Um, letters went out, citations went out, uh, appear to summons went out. So she's definitely on board with respect to making sure that the sidewalks around the school are safe for our kids. So I think the next thing that the transportation committee would like to do is explore, um, what it might look like to get a larger project to fund connecting the sidewalks in our community. Um, because it's very sporadic. So that would involve engaging stakeholders, um, surveys, this sort of thing, a lot of legwork. Um, the transportation committee is willing to do some of that legwork, but I think we just kind of need, um, the thumbs up from the board because ultimately, as a subcommittee of the EFPC, we're to advise the board on matters of policy and these sorts of things. Whereas this kind of, um, goes outside the scope of what affects just the board decisions because we would be reaching other, out to other municipalities and things like that. So I guess basically, um, we would continue to come back and keep you guys in the loop, as, as our progress. But we did want to, um, make sure that the board wanted us to move forward on this because it's a, it would be a, a big project and a big undertaking. But I think the school community is, is the best place to bridge that gap between the three municipalities, so.
So first of all, you've done an enormous amount of legwork on this, so thank you. It's a great update. So just to understand, the application has to go in from a municipality, they have to be the sponsor?
Correct.
So I would think that it would make sense to find, to try to see who could be the lead sponsor as a municipality, and then we work with them, but they take the lead. Um, because we, we can't own that process, we can't apply for it. And it really isn't, to your point, the charter of committees. But I do think that, and I know, I mean, I remember going to meetings of the community group that couldn't get traction and it was the municipality. So I think it makes sense for municipality to lead it. And if, if there's some folks from the transportation committee that want to participate on their effort, um, I think that's great. But I don't think this is something that a board committee or subcommittee should be, should be leading just because of that piece. Um, and then, you know, and coordinating with the other municipalities and I don't, I wouldn't see that as a, necessarily the role of a committee per se. But I think the work you've done is great in identifying it and I hope we can come together. If it pieces, not just connecting the sidewalks, we have a lot of sidewalks within a five-block radius that are hazardous to walk on unless you're looking down, where it sticks up, it sticks down. And I mean, you know, it's easy to trip. So I think, I think, you know, any conversations about this is not just connecting what we have, but fixing what's already there. And, and that is in the domain of Sag Harbor Village, per se.
It's going to be the village.
That's, that's a village issue specifically? So, you know, to me, you know, kind of start in the circle and move out. So I think that's an easier conversation to have too. And I love the idea of the fact that with new leadership, they're actually summoning, that you have to clear because any big snowstorm, you see kids and community members walking in the street and that's, you know, that's a serious incident waiting to happen.
I think the, um, thinking that the, the village and the towns, um, will, and take the initiative to start this project, um, probably won't go anywhere because, um, ultimately it's the, in the interest of our school community to, um, be in partnership with them, to see what that might look like with what our constituents want. Um, and, oh, and there's Ken Dorff, we were just talking about it. Come on here. Kids on the transportation committee with me. Um, I think that, just to bring you up to speed on the conversation, um, I just shared with the community, like, kind of where we are in the process. And Chris's feedback was that, um, maybe it isn't the role of the transportation committee and that maybe the, the municipalities should, um, do that initiative. Um, based on my conversation with, um, Tommy John and Aiden, what I wanted to propose is that we use our human capital as a school community to help move this project forward because ultimately, we're, I mean, the school is in the village, but it's, the school's, um, parents aren't necessarily in the village. So I'm not in the village, I'm not a village resident, Ken is not a village resident. So we don't have much say in the village, but as a school community, I think that, um, they'd be more willing to listen to, um, the needs of the school. And so we kind of need that endorsement of the board that this is something that the school wants. Um, and also that, you know, the village has a very small footprint and it has not a lot of resources and, and we have a lot of human capital. And so I'm willing to volunteer my time, the committee's willing to volunteer their time, um, and time, kind of take some initiative. I invited the chief of police to our last meeting, um, to kind of talk through these issues. And I just think that, um, I think the, the school does need to take a leadership role on this if we actually want to see it happen. That's in my view. But yes, um, we would then go to the media municipalities and say, this is where we see the issues and this is what we see the fixes to be. Um, would you be willing to work with us to make these things happen? And then at that point, I mean, basically we need to come to them with what we want as opposed to just say, you know what you should do, you know what you should do, you know what you should do. Because we've been doing that for about ten years and I haven't done this very well.
And just clarity, Ken, I said I, I think it's great. I just felt that based on the fact that a municipality has to lead the, lead the, be the underwriter and lead it, that not having them lead it and having us lead it seems problematic. And we've got a fourth municipality, which is North Haven, right?
Southampton Town.
All of it is? So North Haven is not involved, or their government is not involved at all in any of that?
They have their own highway department, so it would be, and Sag Harbor has their own highway department. So how it works is they have, uh, IMAs and municipal agreements to do that.
All right, so then they defer to Southampton proper.
But it would, Southampton, because of the tax basis, like Diana was saying. We'll come through on that, but it would have to be a Sag Harbor application, supported, as I understand it, supported by the town of East Hampton and the town of Southampton because the village has its own highway department, which is responsible for sidewalks, roads, except for any state highway.
So would one municipality have to be the lead on it when it's submitted, or can all three do it jointly?
They'd have to do their own areas.
So each, each three have to do their own?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, what I'm hearing is that the school.
And I think it's great, I think we should pursue it. I think just legitimately, if you start with the village and then have a point person, Tommy John at Southampton, one of the town, one of the council people in East Hampton, that makes the most sense. So that's, like, the trans, like, the committee's saying, I think that's the most productive. But I think it has to, I think, and I could be wrong, has to come as a village application since they have their own highway department.
Right, exactly.
So the commonality amongst all of the municipalities is the school, right? And so that's why you think it should come from the school and it's a safe walking to school.
Well, coordination by the school, not, it can't come from the school.
Right, but, right, that, coordination.
Coordination from the school.
But my point is, the only commonality connecting all of it is the school. Um, and you're not asking to expend any school resources at this time, just the time that the transportation committee members are willing to spend on it.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I would support that, I think it's a great idea.
So I think that's a great idea and, you know, I would support that as well. And then I'm sure that you'll report back as, as, you know, once you get closer and then you would have to send it to the municipalities to, so they would have to take the lead to get it done. So it's more like getting legwork done.
To get them motivated to do it.
Yep.
And coordinated. Are, do you sense, I mean, this may be premature answer, do you sense that the three municipalities, i- is, is there a reason why that we need to sit down together to try to coordinate this, or is it really three separate tracks?
I, well, it would be three separate submittals. Um, but again, preliminarily, we, we haven't even fleshed out any details because at our last meeting, we were like, okay, so the, the committee was all on board.
That's great.
To put it forward. And then they, we said, what's next steps? And they said, we need to go to the board of education and make sure that we have the support of the board before we go rogue and start, start reaching out to stakeholders and saying, hey, like, where do you see the problems in your area? Because I.
I, you would, and I think what it is, they want to see what your plan was. So you'd start closest to the school with funding sidewalks.
Right. Which is, which is the village.
Well, no, but, but just saying that, like, that's where the plan would start.
Right.
Um, even though the school lies on the East Hampton side of the village, it's still part of the village. So I think you'd start at the closest proximity to the school and you build a master plan as you build sidewalks and get funding the way out. That application could be then the same thing, all three submit.
Right. And, and ultimately, like, we do have to reach out to stakeholders because I know the issues that are near my house, but I don't know the issues that are directly around the school. So we'd, we'd have to engage the school community on, on where they see the pockets of need and.
It, it may be, it may be interesting actually to do that earlier, early on because that would be something compelling to bring to the municipalities, to speak to them. If it was to say, and using this just as an example, but if there was a survey that went out to parents saying, you know, are there challenges, you know, do, do your children walk or bike to school, if not, why? Would there be anything that could be changed that you would feel comfortable in doing, that it would be motivated? You know, just getting some of that, because if there's some information or data that can be brought, that might, you know, that might clarify what should be done, but also kind of demonstrate, hey, your voters, your community wants this. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's, I think you're fleshing out kind of what Diana was saying when she said we should have surveys. So I think you're on the same page and, uh, I think it sounds like a great idea, so.
I'm a question.
Mr. Dorff, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Oh, there you go. Is it all right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No problem?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you give me just a couple of, uh, minutes, just a little, also, very, very brief background. A lot of you know that I've been on this transportation thing for like twenty-five years. Yes, and I was about twenty when I started. And, and Matt knows, actually, when Matt met me the first, you thought I worked for this, like, for a career, right? He spent transportation time, invited me, blah, blah. And it, someday, if you want to know about the Safe Roots to School and the tragedy of how that fell apart, please talk to me because it really was an important, uh, failure. We learned a lot from that, about this question of municipalities. This is the first time in the twenty, thirty, almost thirty years I've lived here, that the village and the school board can be aligned. That's a fact. They've been at war, they've been in different places, but this is a window, and I want to take advantage of this window while we have it. There are, there are a lot of ideas that people have had over the years, a couple of things. It's not just the school that's the commonality. The village has all kinds of ideas, uh, which will be, I'm also in the village transportation committee separately. The village has its own ideas, but the school can be a driver. We, we, for our needs. And I think that's what we want to focus on. Many questions like, why is there no parking here and, and if, why are there no, no sidewalks around either school? So we can't have drop off. Why is there no snow removal? There's so many questions that we have. The village is open, really open, to work with us. So we really should take advantage of this. Chris, you said something I think is very important, but we need a baseline because we want to show, and we did a lot of that with the Safe Roots to School, but that's a long time ago. How kids get to school, what the obstacles are, where parents drive, et cetera. Um, we have a lot, a lot of opportunity right now, but one of the things I want to do is, is work with you to get your approval that this is more than just buzzing. It's also about bikes and walking and parking and everything else. And also that we can work together to do some surveys. So we have a baseline, which will also help with our proposals. Um, I, I, there's more I can say, but I think that's the main story. And it'd be great if we got on board with this. Oh, kids, biking and walking is actually less today. It's less than it was twenty years ago. And we have less biking, walking than other schools of similar sizes, similar. We're really not in great shape for that. Uh, lots of traffic, you know. We can do a lot better, and I think with the right infrastructure, with the village cooperating, I think we can do a lot better. Any questions for me?
Who would you recommend the first steps are?
Two things, a survey.
Right.
And also working with, as, as Dana said, working with different subgroups, like we did last time, to say, what are your needs? Uh, talking about biking, type of parking, talking about the drop off, talking about.
And when you make a survey, like, feedback in the community or physical survey, like?
Both, actually. And one of the things we're working with the village on separately, but this is really important, is where are their sidewalks? I mean, you know, throughout Sag Harbor, there's sidewalks that come, that disappear.
And they stop.
And they go nowhere, then they go sidewalk.
They go nowhere. Yeah, there's lots of obvious places for sidewalks, like Grand Street. I mean, people could drop off their kids right there, there were sidewalks. So things like that. So things like that. First, a physical infrastructure, exactly, of where kids are walking, where they could walk. And then also a sense of how gets, kids get to school today. There are a lot of kids who could walk and bike. There are a lot of kids who could park in different places. We don't know, right? We don't have that data right now, I believe. Correct?
Right.
But we could. We did a lot, we, we did some informal surveys last time, we had a lot of good, good information. And just one, one point, I, I, at that time, when we did the Safe Roots to School application, we were told that we had the best application in New York State, in New York State, half a million dollars, but the voters never applied. Just so you know that, that's, that was, it was one of the tragic moments of my life. Really. I sort of withdrew for a while. But I, I really think we have an opportunity right now. I really do. So that's made it happen.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely. I guess the only thing, he brings up a great point, is if we did do a survey, I, obviously, the, the easiest way to do that is to have Scott help us push that out to the school community, and I guess maybe that might, I don't know if that considers an expense because I don't think it costs us anything, but that would be using school resources, if you will. So I guess that's kind of why we want to make sure the board's, you know, supports the endeavor. Yeah?
Yes, I'd support that.
Thanks, Dean.
Dan, just one thing, I realized that also, I am not sure that municipalities cannot work together. Because the last time we were able, Sag Harbor had to leave it, lead it, but Southampton and East Hampton were able to support it.
Awesome.
So, so there can, if that, if that's the same thing, we can get them, because here in Long Island, you have to work together, given the way things are structured.
All right. Awesome. Thanks, everybody.
Are there any other committees that want to provide any updates? Kelly?
I can just give a brief policy committee update. I just want to let folks know, we created a shared drive for the current committee members in order to put current, future, and archive material and resources, making them more accessible. We completed a comprehensive review and table of contents, contents for the policy committee manual, and we did a comparison between what was online in the Erie One manual and what we had hard copy, because we know we had to kind of upload some of those, and you'll see, like, for the concussion policy, we put forth, because there was a third review but not an approval. So we're just reviewing everything, making sure everything's good and packed together. We're currently working on the fundraising policy and the facilities used, and we had some current update requests from Erie One voters, and we'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to add, the diversity and inclusion committee is really doing well, really thriving. Two highlights are the subcommittee that was formed to create diverse classroom libraries in collaboration with John Germain Library is moving along as a result of a survey that was submitted to our teachers who made specific requests on how to make their classroom libraries more diverse. As a result, John Germain has committed to donating at minimum two books per class as a start, looking at those lists to create diversity in the classroom. And then the other subcommittee is one on films, tough topics. We just had an event yesterday at John Germain Library, that was the Green Book, and we had two key speakers who were a part of that time and discussed what that experience was like, which was also really positive and, and enlightening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Okay. Um, any other business anyone wants to raise? All right, we'll go to public input two. If there's anybody here for public input two, please come forward, state your name. You have three minutes.
Hi, Sandy Caroll. Welcome. Nice to have you here. I'd like to start with the sound system in here, especially with this, both myself and Caleb could barely hear opening comments or anything, so it is getting worse. Like, maybe it's the cold everybody's got or whatever, but we're all like, what are you, what are you going to say? So that's number one. Number two, I would like to thank Jeff for his honesty on Stella Maris. It was quite refreshing to actually be told the truth and to know what's ahead of us. So I guess my backup question to that would be, is the contract of every month stipend for the architects going to continue through the building of the wall? Because then we're talking a lot of money that we'll have to pay them without public approval. So I would, I would like an answer to that. Resolution eight fifteen, I feel like I've seen her name before on the resolutions, last meeting maybe, but I also noticed it's backdated again from November. I thought it was on the last one and backdated. I could be wrong, but just, it hit me odd. And the last is the process of which we discuss on candidacy. You are required to follow policy and procedure, and you don't get to change it because something happened without your knowledge or not knowing it. Jobs are posted internally. I went on OLOS to look the job up. It was not under school business leader, it was under Pearson. So unless you're specifically looking for a school to go work at, which I don't think Pearson would be at the end of this, probably high on a lot of people's lists, you're going to get many applicants. The rumor mill has been flying all week about it, so I applaud the two board members. Devo did know on the process, not necessarily the person. My advice, or I will say that I would respect you to follow the same policy and procedure, not it happens sometimes, but to follow the same one all the time. It's much more professional. It definitely doesn't get us into trouble or into conversations like we're having tonight. So I wanted to say that. And then, are we now going to allow, thanks for coming in, Ken? So like, I had a, I wanted to raise the issues on the policy that we were discussing. Should I just raise my hand and come up to the podium and spoke then? Or are we waiting for public input to speak? I don't know what, if it will change.
I will answer that one, even though we're not usually going to respond to public input.
No, no, you should respond, thank you.
But, no, but Ken's part of the Transportation Committee, so he was supposed to be part of that presentation.
He was held up and was waiting to talk.
Oh, so, so was the presentation. Okay.
Yeah, and sorry, Diana asked you, otherwise I wouldn't have said it.
I know, you, Ken, I, I, I'm all about sidewalks, so I just wanted to know if there was something different since I said every meeting was an answer.
I was sitting here like this, waiting for someone to...
Yes.
Anyone else for public input?
Hi, Dominic Clapier, president of Sag Harbor. How are you all?
Well.
I was, I want to tell you, I was really touched, I watched the last meeting on the video, I don't know if you've ever really done that, it was actually short. It's nice to do. I was really touched by the presentation, Sandy, about the previous principal, Jeff, and all those that you talked, especially, it's nice to see your dad. And it reminded me of something that's really important. So I gather, I went to look at the paper, and I saw that that plaque was dedicated on October third, two thousand and three. So I'm here to talk about the Sag Harbor Learning Center, and I'd like you to think back, what was your life like in two thousand and three, and project far ahead to that same period. What will twenty years from now, that new facility look like to us? I think it's going to be as equally indispensable as this addition has been to us, and you, this board here needs to be laying the groundwork for that to be the great success it can be. I know you have a lot of heavy lifting to do in the next six months, you're going into a new superintendent search, you're going to be figuring out how to spend our taxpayer money, but you're also going to be laying the groundwork, and Chris brought it up, is how are we going to make some revenue, how are we going to program that building, and make it the wonderful thing it can be? And I'd like you to think about that over the holidays. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for public input? All right, looking at that, can I get a motion to convene executive session to discuss a legal matter? Second.
Okay, two minute time.